Sorry, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All stand for the flag salute. And the flag has moved to that side of the building now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, so next would be roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Accounted for.
And Mayor Protam Wall asked to be excused.
Mayor, I move that we excuse Mayor Protam Wall.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? He is excused. Councilmember Sonmore?
It's one of the questions I wanted to ask during the protocol meeting information. Do we have to ask why are councilmembers being excused? We used to do that. Have we stopped doing that?
We haven't done it for a long time. Is that in the protocol manual?
I don't believe that's in the protocol manual for consideration tonight. It may have been past practice, but not the document under consideration this evening.
Go ahead.
We used to, at times, we had certain reasons why we wouldn't excuse people, and that's why I'm asking. It's not that I'm putting him on the line for anything or anything, but it's just a general conversation since it's part of the conversation tonight.
Okay. We can, yeah, we can add that provision if the council wishes.
But tonight he's been, I think it's so many unexcused absences, but tonight he's been excused.
We used to have people that would, you know, because of work commitments, and we had one councilmember that was constantly missing for work. And then at a certain time, the council chose not to excuse. And that was one of the past practices.
All right, well, tonight, Mayor Protam Wall has been excused. And we can talk about the protocol manual later. For the, oh, public comment is next. Sorry, I was skipping through that. Do we have any public comment?
We do. First is Sandra Crane. And you'll have five minutes to speak at the podium.
It won't take me that long.
Is that turned on? Oh, can you just press the button that's on the bottom?
It's on.
Is it? I don't see it. Doesn't it have the red thing on if it's on?
I would like to address the councilmembers about the lighted crosswalk outside the library. It's worth your life to get across that walkway during the day. I don't know what it's going to take, a fatality, perchance. I hope you can do something.
Do we still need to have them state their name and address?
I was just stating their name. I have their area of residence.
Okay.
For the record. So next is Paula Guyen. And she's... Mount Lake, oh, Mount Lake Plaza resident.
Hi, my name is Paula Guyen. Number one, I would like to thank Jeff Knight for taking care of Diamond Knot for us at the Plaza. It's really been wonderful. Thank you, Jeff. We don't hear any more noise anymore. The other complaint was Calvary Church, excuse me, on Wednesday night at 8:00. I don't know if they have the children's choir in there, but the parents, when they pick them up at 9:00, they're honking their horn to tell the kid to come because they're there to pick them up because they have to get up and go to school the next day. So thank you again, Jeff.
Elizabeth, did you want to speak or were you just for the proclamation? Okay. If anyone in the online audience would like to speak, please use the hand raised tool. Going once, going twice. There are no more public comments.
All right, thank you. Okay, so now will be the consent calendar. Who would like to move that? And Councilmember Sonmore?
I'd like to approve the consent calendars, everything but item E.
And so do we have to pull it here or can we pull it on another? Vote on this and then pull it?
You can make a motion on items A through D to approve. And then if item E is removed, we would request that it be added to item seven and then push everything further down on the agenda. So the city manager's report would be item eight.
After the city manager's report?
Just before.
Okay. Councilmember Sonmore?
Say the motion.
Yeah, did you want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendars, items A through D.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And so we're taking number E off and moving it to number 7A. Do we need to vote on that?
No, we can move it to item seven and then manager's report will be item eight and so on.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda is the proclamation for the U.S. Constitution Week, and that will be with Councilmember Woodard. Do you want to read it over there?
As in from the mic, public mic?
So that we can have our D.A.R. representative be there with you. And then we're going to have a photo taken of everybody in front of the flag.
I swear, Mayor, it's whoever was reading my mind. That's exactly how I hoped this would play out, with the exception of here. So somebody caught me off guard with that one. Thank you for being here. I think everybody's gotten used to me these last five years that there's going to be a little running commentary before I read. And I really just wanted to make sure that we pause because sometimes I think that you really get an appreciation for your own country when you live elsewhere. And I had that experience. It was a little bit deeper than that, though. My family and I moved to Spain and found ourselves teaching in public schools there. Well, I ended up teaching one of their civics classes. So here I am, teaching the Spanish Constitution to EU students across the, well, across the EU, but in this particular school. But in doing so, it made me go back and look at the Articles of Confederation, Bill of Rights, and everything that, just everything that I have absolutely taken for granted at some level at some point in my life. So I love that we have this every year to remind us, pause, reflect, and appreciate this country. So with that, I have the honor of reading the City of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation. U.S. Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd, 2023. Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to read, study, and preach the greatest document of human liberty and to protect the freedoms set forth in the Bill of Rights, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, on behalf of our mayor, Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, mayor of the City of Mount Lake Terrace, and on behalf of the city council, we do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd of 2023 as Constitution Week and encourage all to read the Constitution and reaffirm the values and community identified by the framers of the Constitution in 1787, signed by our mayor this 18th day of September 2023 in the City of Mount Lake Terrace, State of Washington, and the witness whereof and the seal and signatures of this city are affixed. Are we doing, waiting on photos?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know what this was. Don't you know that?
That's my name.
Okay, Nancy, that, Liz. Oh, that's one of my favorites.
I remember.
Yes, as is my mom.
Well, this is an honor for me. This is the first official proclamation that I'm reading as a councilmember. So I like that, as we're approaching Election Day, get a chance to recognize how strong our voter registration and voting systems are in this state. So without further ado, here, I'm going to read the National Voter Registration Day proclamation here on September 19th, 2023. Whereas the framers of the Constitution establish the United States as a representative democracy that relies on civic engagement and whereas, as a fundamental element of effective democracy, is a principle that all eligible citizens should participate in fair and open elections. And whereas, in order to reach those who have not fully embraced their rights and responsibilities as citizens, the community must expand opportunities for voter education and voter registration. And whereas, National Voter Registration Day is a nonpartisan civic holiday with volunteers and organizations from around the country participating in coordinated events to create awareness of voter registration opportunities. And whereas, active voter participation is vital to our community and residents' well-being as participation brings access to funding and resources to our community. And now, therefore, the mayor, Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, mayor of the City of Mount Lake Terrace, on behalf of the city council, proclaims September 19th, 2023 as National Voter Registration Day in the City of Mount Lake Terrace and encourages our community to participate in voter awareness activities to promote voting and voter registration programs. This proclamation is signed by the mayor this 18th day of September 2023 at the City of Mount Lake Terrace, State of Washington, and the witness whereof and the seal and signatures of this city are fixed. Does that work?
Would you like me in there?
No, no problem.
Okay. Ready, set, go. Okay, now the two presenters will begin, please. I'll get you guys all together.
Would you like any middle?
All right. Ready, set. All right.
Thank you. All right, so I hope that was for voter registration. And now we go on to public hearing. Do we have any? We have to open it first, but...
Well, I think she's going to present first.
Oh, we have to present first and then open it. So Associate Planner Sarah Pizzo is going to, I guess, report before the public hearing and approval of the resolution for the annexation for 4713 240th Street Southwest.
Yes, hello, I'm Sarah Pizzo, and I'll be presenting on the annexation petition at 4713 240th Street Southwest. So our purpose today is to review a petition that was submitted to annex this property and review and approve a resolution declaring notice of intent to annex this area with the Snohomish County Boundary Review Board. So I'll be going over some background information about the property, consistency with the comprehensive plan, the annexation process, and where we're currently at, the request of counsel tonight, our next steps, an opportunity for Q and A, and some supplemental information if we need it. All right, so this property located at 4713 240th Street Southwest is located just north of 240th Street Southwest and east of 48th Avenue West. It's the yellow highlighted parcel on the map. This is unincorporated Snohomish County, and it's an island, so it's surrounded by the City of Mount Lake Terrace jurisdiction. And the property is .43 acres. And the reason the property owners are requesting to annex into the city is because they have an outdated septic system and would like to receive city sewer services. So our comprehensive plan says that in order to receive city services, property either needs to be annexed into the city or have an annexation agreement. Our most recent adopted comprehensive plan from 2019 actually identifies this property as an area of potential annexation, Island C. So the annexation process, we're about halfway through. So so far, we have received a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings that was received by council. And council held a public meeting to consider that request, which allowed for the circulation of a petition that was signed by the property owners. That petition went to Snohomish County Assessor's Office to be reviewed, and we've received a certification of sufficiency. So now we are presenting the petition to city council at tonight's public hearing and are seeking approval of a resolution to declare our intent to annex with the county. After this, we will go to Planning Commission and do a work session and public hearing regarding the zoning of this property. And then we will be back to city council for a hearing on the draft zoning and annexation ordinances. And then we will send our materials to the Boundary Review Board to review our notice of intent to annex. And then we will come back to city council for a work session and public hearing to adopt the ordinances for annexation and the zoning ordinance. And then the certified final ordinance and annexation certificate will go to Snohomish County, the Office of Financial Management, and city departments. So tonight, the question for council is whether to accept the petition and whether to approve the resolution declaring a notice of intent to annex. Mid-October, we'll go to Planning Commission to address the zoning of the property. Early November, we'll be back to city council for the first reading of the ordinances. And then late November, we expect to send our application to Snohomish County Boundary Review Board. Now I'd like to open it up for discussion and questions.
All right. Now I can ask if there's questions. All right. Anyone with questions, comments?
Do you want us to? I'm just reading our hearing guideline. And sometimes I've seen it different, and so it's nice to have been able to have this up front. Do you want us to ask questions now and then, again, after public comment? I just didn't see where...
Well, the questions now will be for whatever was reported.
So Mayor, at this point, I think it's appropriate for motion and a second to open the public hearing. And then at that point, then the city clerk will let council know if there is any written testimony that's been submitted.
Okay, so who would like to open it? Councilmember Sonmore?
Since I was making the information. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. And are there any written testimonies submitted?
No one signed up to speak on this topic. And there's no written testimony.
And no one's signed tonight's? So no one signed up online?
No one signed up in person. If anyone in the online audience would like to speak on this particular topic, please use the hand raised tool. Going once, going twice. That's the end of the public hearing comments.
All right, thank you. Then if there has been no one, I guess we can, at this point, can we close the public hearing or do the Q and A before we close it?
Do the Q and A prior to.
Okay. All right, so now, here's your chance. Councilmember Sonmore?
So my chance is to utilize our city attorney. Our city attorney's not here and for the last... Yeah, she's on the line, but she's not in the room. But, you know, sometimes out of sight, out of mind. So I want to be able to ask her questions. And so I'm hoping we get in the habit of asking more questions to our city attorney. We used to have our city attorney sit in the room with us, and we'd ask questions almost at every meeting. And so now because of COVID and other things, we don't ask those questions. And a lot of times, I don't think this has come before some of our new council members. And so that's why I'm going to ask the questions that I'm asking to our city attorney because I asked some last time. But what I wanted to know is, and this is just an educational piece, I don't want to scare anybody off from the actual annexation itself, but do we have to annex? Can we deny it in annex? What are the pros and cons to this annex? And then can you talk a little bit about the zoning and what that looks like? Because we're just doing a hookup. And so I wanted to know a little bit more about the zoning and the cost, if there is any, to the city.
I assume Sarah's prepared to answer those, but just for your information, I'm here to back her up if she can answer any of those questions.
That's kind of like what I was asking last time about that chart and if that was up to date. And I didn't want to put you on the spot. So I'm sorry if I went straight to the attorney, but I just want to get in the habit of making sure we utilize our attorney as much as possible.
Sure, so the comprehensive plan, this chart is a little bit out of date in terms of where the urban growth boundary is and where our potential areas of annexation are, as well as the acreage for Island C. We've since had a survey submitted as part of the petition application that has the accurate acreage. So this is a little bit out of date. But our comprehensive plan does show support for annexing this parcel. The Snohomish County, or the urban growth boundary has essentially made it clear that all properties within that boundary are ripe for annexation and would make sense to be annexed into the City of Mount Lake Terrace. And so this property is located within our urban growth boundary, and our comprehensive plan is in line with annexation. So you are not required to annex. But staff would support annexation given that it is in line with our comprehensive plan and within our urban growth boundary. Sure, so that is a boundary that the county has essentially drawn to determine where land should be annexed into. And if I'm, if there's a better way to explain it, Hillary, or...
So I can help a little bit there. So the urban growth boundary is drawn based on the population projection from, through the Office of Financial Management to the county, which then allocates a number of future residents to the city. The city then selects the variables for zoning, how many units per acre will be developed. And then we draw the urban growth boundary with an eye to incorporate all of those citizens within the density that we expect. So those are all things that are coming up that you'll be able to work on as part of the comprehensive plan. This is, however, going to be part of the urban growth boundary regardless because it is already surrounded by the city limits.
And the reason I ask is because our legislators just changed a lot of that. They're telling us now how to build. So I'm even wondering if we even have an urban growth since they have required or are stating that we have to put one possible dwelling unit on our property. So that's why I was asking the question. So it seems the urban, or the urban growth boundary is almost the whole entire city.
Correct.
Yes, absolutely. It's, we don't really have anywhere to expand outwards. So whatever land that we currently have within inside the city limits, we would plan for to incorporate future residents as part of that property.
And then just the last follow up. Can you explain a little bit about the zoning? Because they're kind of already zoned, but they are annexed in. So can you kind of explain how that would change?
Sure, so our comprehensive plan has a zoning designation of low-density residential. But because they are not part of the city, there isn't a zoning designation yet, just the comprehensive plan land use designation. So in order to receive the zoning designation, we need to go through a process with Planning Commission and city council to adopt a zoning that's in line with what our comprehensive plan says. And so that would be the next step in the process.
Good job, thank you.
So the zoning around that is around RS 7200?
I believe it's RS 8400.
Okay. All right, I don't see any other hands going. Oh, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the folks at home. You just have to believe that those are real things. That said, the zones, we will be going over that through the comprehensive plan. So whatever we do in this process of annexing could be changed through our comprehensive plan. Is that accurate on my part or am I oversimplifying?
Let's see, what we're doing in this process is separate from that. It is possible, the comprehensive plan, zoning could change, and then there would have to be a rezone. But I would say that that process is separate from this process of designating the zoning.
You know, that part I understood.
Oh, okay.
I was just trying to, in my own kind of educating myself here, it's like, well, we're doing this process, but the reality is, whatever zone we come up with, that whole area is what we're looking at. And theoretically speaking, that's why I was saying the RS 8400 versus 7200, I'd need a crib sheet in front of me to know what any of that means. But nonetheless, just kind of recognizing that we're in the process of reevaluating the entire city.
Right. So, it could, it could change through that process, the comprehensive plan designation.
Okay. Just take some pressure off of me thinking about how to do this. Uh, that said, I did have one actual other question. That was my own, and I've just been presuming this, but you've kind of set it up. The same reason that they don't have zonings, I presume whatever taxes they're paying are not coming to this building, which in annexing them, that will change. It will start paying us. I mean, they're using our streets to get out of the area. They aren't using our septic. They would like to, so they'll pay that, however that's going. But everything else that would come with being a part of the city of Mount Lake Terrace would also apply.
Correct.
Fair enough.
Yes, and they're also using the fire and the, yeah, all right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Sanmore.
Mayor, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
This is to close. All right. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. I'm glad we have this thing to follow here. Thank you very much. So, once it is closed...
Now, you need a motion and a second and discussion, if any, on consideration of the ordinance.
Who would like to do that?
Resolution, excuse me.
What are the council's wishes? And I think it's on here that I don't have to, on that page yet. Yes, I'm looking for it.
Mayor, I'm just going to take a hack at this. I move that we approve the resolution for 4713 240th Street Southwest annexation. I, I'm, well, I'll repeat that. I move that, that we accept the petition to annex this property located at 4713 240th Street Southwest and pass the resolution directing the city manager to notify the Boundary Review Board of its intent to annex the property.
Second.
Second? Great. All right. We don't have to discuss any of this. We just go on to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I think that she has it here as a resolution, but it's really an ordinance?
No, that, that was my mistake. It is a resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution.
Yeah. The next one you see on this topic should be an ordinance, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So, now, are we at E or are we at seven?
Uh, E, E seven.
E and then seven.
Hope I didn't sink anybody's battleship. So, uh, talking tonight about the city protocol manual, and we talked a little bit about this last Thursday, but the purpose of this is kind of, is to provide a universal document for guidance on how we conduct business and how staff interacts with city council and clarify expectations and put that all in one spot, so it's easy for everybody to understand, everybody to, to clarify. Also, to move council regular meeting dates and work session dates to one evening during the week, and the day of the week that we chose was Thursday for a couple of different reasons, but the main one was so that it would cause as little disruption as possible with the other city commissions that also operate, in this instance, the Planning Commission. Those meetings will still be at 7:00 PM. No change there. But then, during the discussion last Thursday, council offered some suggestions on things that we can change, and I wanted to make sure that council knows that we made those changes. So, in section 2.05, in the second paragraph, we made sure that it said annually for the selection of the mayor pro temp, and highlighted that there. In section 807(c), we added, in an instance where there are numerous, numerous people desiring to comment at city council, 20 or more, we would automatically reduce the comment period from five minutes to three. But that does not take away the ability for council to reduce that further for a higher number of commenters. That provision is actually, is still in the code as well. Change, or, excuse me, section 8.07(c), and we changed business agenda language to regular agenda, so people would be more comfortable with that language and understood, understand right away what that meant. And then, in section 8.07(c), we changed the two-hour time limit to three hours, just to make sure we accommodate everybody that was, or the meetings go on long enough at 10 o'clock. I believe the comment was made. If we haven't gotten what we need to be done by 10 o'clock, then there should be an affirmative motion to extend. So, made that change there. Section 10.01, I added in the affirmative that the city council may amend their protocol manual at any time at your sole discretion, as well as that language was retained, updated for new law or new policy that was already in the, already in the protocol manual. And then, section 11.1, added a subsection A to read, "In recognition of service to the community, non-returning council members shall be provided with a recognition of their service, a plaque or other commemorative item, similar commemorative item." And those were the changes I heard last Thursday at your work session and the changes that I made to the manual that's in front of you tonight. Everything else remains the same, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Sanmore?
Here we go. The reason I pulled the consent calendar off is not that I oppose the manual, so I'm going to take this off so I don't clunk. It was more dialogue about changing our meeting times, because if we would have passed this in consent calendar, we automatically changed our times of our meeting, and it should have been, to me, a separate agenda item, and it should have been talked about more and more transparent. And so, my dialogue about that, and I have some questions more, every time I read it, I have more questions, like it talks about our city manager review, but it really doesn't talk about how we do it and the expectations. And I think that we could write stuff that would benefit our city manager into it, because I know the expectations that we're going to be talking about next week might come up, but it doesn't really list anything, and it might be a surprise to our city manager about what we want the review to look like. You know, we talked about the salary committee, written response, people calling in, and that's why I know how I feel about people calling in. To me, it's not a huge deal, but years ago, we had somebody that worked, and they missed, like, a couple months of meetings. It was quite a bit, but we didn't have anything on the books, and, and there was different things. So, at times, people would choose not to excuse that person, and we don't address it in here, really. It talks about telecommuning, but very on a limited basis. So, what does that really mean? Is that one time a year? Is that twice a year? There were some other things on thresholds of the dollar amount for the city manager. It's listed in here, but there's no dollar amount. Agenda items, remote attendance, our city manager, our attorney, there was some information on there, rules on how to inform, so we're equal on communication amongst council members. That's always been a big one. And talked about, you know, we added, instead of people talking for three minutes, it's now five. I don't know how that came into fruition, but it just changed. And so, my dialogue with that, those are all those questions I had, but changing the day of the week, I wanted, wanted to discuss, and we've never really discussed, what hasn't been working for the last 70 years? Why are we changing the times of the meetings? What will three days difference make? And what's, what's working? Is it not working for staff, council, citizens? And if it's not working, all we have to do is adjust that agenda item instead of it being on the next, so we talk about it on Thursday, and it goes to Monday's meeting. All we have to do is move it out to either the next work session or the next council meeting. It doesn't have to be on the next agenda item. Council oversees the agenda items on there. And I think the biggest thing that has bothered me over the years, and I finally put it into play, thanks to Councilman Woodard, you didn't even know it. What we used to do and what used to work really well is first, we'd get a heads-up from our city manager on upcoming agenda items, and then we'd have a printed look-ahead schedule, so we'd see what was printed and coming up on the agenda. And then, in the city manager report, he would talk about, or she would talk about what was coming up, and so we'd hear it again. And then, it would come into a council work session one, two, or three times. And about eight years ago, somebody had the bright idea and said, oh, this is too much of discussing an important topic. Let's only discuss it once. And it really kind of has hurt us, because we have missed things by doing that. We haven't had good dialogues by not doing that, because a lot of new council members, they see something one time, and they're expected to vote on it. I remember Councilman Woodard saying that, and I'd be so frustrated for him, because he was absolutely correct. Okay, you've got an annexation. Guess what? You're going to vote on it today, and you were just elected yesterday. And, you know, it's nice to be able to have that agenda topic come to you one, two, or three times. And I think that would help the schedule of what we're doing. That benefits our staff, that benefits our citizens, and it benefits the council members being able to have meetings like that instead of it coming to the council once. And, you know, our water study's coming up, so I know I'm being kind of facetious here. So, we look at it once, and then all of a sudden, you see what happens to the water bills. You know, did we really discuss it enough last time when we raised the water bills and, and what would happen to us? So, what if it came back on the agenda one, two, or three times? What would that hurt? And so, I was hoping we'd have some more dialogue about what isn't working with our council members, or our council meetings, and how to improve our meetings on that. Because right now, if you would have voted on the consent calendar, you wouldn't even seen an agenda item that we changed our meetings to all Thursdays. And I have talked to other councils that have meetings on the same day, and they say it can be a hardship, because if you have meetings on every Thursday, that means if, maybe you're a Seahawk fan, you can't go to any more games. If your child has a sport events, guess what? Any Thursday, you can't go to anything if it's this or that. So, I mean, I'd be kind of reluctant to vote on the change, just because we haven't had a lot of dialogue on it, and we haven't talked about what isn't working and how do we make our council meetings better? So, we all have a good chance of understanding what we're voting on. If I was a citizen and you were voting on my annexation and you didn't know really what you were voting on, I'd, I'd wonder why hadn't you talked about it? And that's why I was trying to get our city attorney involved, because a lot of times, we always asked our city attorney a lot of questions about, can we do this? Can we not do this? What is favorable? What's not favorable? And a lot of times, I think, even limiting our council meetings to a certain time kind of bothers me as well, is because I'm not here to go fast and furious for a citizen. I, I came onto council knowing that I was going to be elected to work on a Monday and a Thursday, and I knew if I had to work to 12 o'clock, I would work to 12 o'clock, because you're our residents, you're a citizen, and I'm trying to do the best for my city. And so, we haven't had this dialogue, and I'm not sure if you had it. I missed one meeting while I was sick, and maybe you've talked about it there, but I'm not, I haven't heard from all the council on why you guys chose Thursdays.
Do, do you want to speak, or? I don't see anyone else's hands going up. Did you have? Go ahead, Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, uh, my perspective on, on the document and, you know, our, our chances to, to review it and sort of think about it are, are, I guess, slightly, slightly different. I feel like this was, this is something that we've spoke with our new city manager about early on with, with him. So, I'm feeling like if, if we want to sort of strip out certain elements to discuss further, I'm, I'm not, you know, I feel as though I've been communicated with clearly about opportunity to, to provide some more consistency with, for staff and the, the time that it takes for them to, you know, prepare for, for these meetings, et cetera. You know, so if, if there are other sort of substantive policy items in, in this document, I'm, you know, perhaps we can pull those out, but I'm, I'm, I'm also comfortable, you know, approving this document now. I, I don't, don't feel that this is new in, in my mind or sort of under-considered. So, that said, open to whatever you might recommend, but those are my thoughts.
Well, I would like to see if anyone else has any, anything, any more input. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Sanmore, for the conversation. I appreciate you making sure that we, we have these conversations. And so, I mean, I, there was a lot there, but I guess you kind of landed on the, the meeting date and curiosity around that, so I'm happy to share my perspective there. And again, I think if there are other specifics that feel like we would like to dig into them further, I would welcome that conversation. But I guess for me, I guess kind of looking at the, I, I hear what you're saying about if you do have something the same day as our meetings, and they're all the same day, that's kind of challenging. I will say, on the flip side of that, if you are scheduling events, as I oftentimes am for my kiddos, they're oftentimes on the same days, so being able to only have one day a, a week that is committed to council work versus Mondays and Thursdays being, you know, out of consideration because we meet on both days, I, I think, for me at least, would be helpful. I think there's also something to be said for being able to calendar it in a way that I don't have to always move around, what is the meeting before the, the first and third Monday? You know, because I, I think that gets really confusing, and I will say it gets very confusing when I have conversations with residents and try to explain to them when our work sessions are, because they are not necessarily a standard date. They're based on the date of our, our meetings. So, I think that would actually add some clarity that I, I think would be helpful. And then, I think my final thought around why it seemed like having a consistent day would be helpful is I know I've had challenges and some frustrations when we have had meaningful work sessions where we have had really good conversation, and we want to change direction on, on something that's come before us. And so, when we have that conversation on a Thursday night and are oftentimes voting on it on a, a Monday evening, there's not a lot of time to both do that work and then make sure that it's shared with the public and enough time for them to have time to digest and react and provide feedback. And so, that has been, I think, a concern and a challenge of mine multiple times. So, the idea of having a week of lead time when we have a meaningful work session before it comes back to where our staff can do the work that they need to do, they can post it appropriately, that our community can, can engage and, and share feedback with us as council members before we come back and vote on it at a meeting, for me, felt like a, a value add that, that would be helpful in having our meetings on a consistent date and having a little bit longer lead time between those two things. So, those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Sanmore?
I'd just like to rebuttal the two comments. So, both of you think adding an extra three days will make it better for staff and our community? That's what I'm understanding. But I'm also saying that you don't have to have it on the next agenda. You can move it out to another agenda, or that item should be coming to us at least a couple of times. And I think that's one of the things that we should be looking at to improve how we vote on stuff and, and how we understand it. If we have questions and somebody's not really comfortable on voting on a topic, how are you getting educated on what an annex is? How are you getting educated on different things that are coming up to vote on? Because it only comes to you once, and if you don't ask those questions and you, you're not able to meet with the city manager, is that responsible council work? I mean, it, you just have to, we just have to think about how stuff is coming to us and what we're doing with it. If you guys are comfortable with every Thursday and it's a majority, then, then that's what it will be. But I guess you're giving the expectations to staff, if something's coming to you on Thursday, that better be ready by the next Thursday.
Thursday, that better be ready by the next Thursday. And my opinion is, I'd rather have staff have enough time to do it right or to give it to us twice instead of rushing them along on something. And they'd have that option right now. And so for the last 70 years, what hasn't been working is we haven't been giving our staff enough time, but it has been working. So that's why I'm trying to understand what the difference is.
Okay, which, who wants to go first? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Witter. I appreciate the opportunity. I guess just since Councilmember Sonmore was kind of responding, I guess I wanted to also just share my feedback. And so, I mean, I don't think it's been working though. And I think we've had times where I've specifically stated in our meetings that it isn't working because we haven't had enough time to, to read and prepare. And we've been provided, you know, information in a, in a late manner. And I think oftentimes that's because we don't give staff enough time. And I fully support, I hear, I like, I think we should have longer lead times and I think we should have more conversation around these things. And I think if we're not ready to vote on them, then we shouldn't move them forward. And I actually think we have been trending, I haven't felt, you haven't heard me object in quite a while to the idea of moving something forward because it feels like we are doing a much better job. And I know that that is probably at the expense of staff, having to work really hard to, to put those things together to get them back to us. And so, yes, I think it's a yes and. I, I think meeting on the same day every week seems to make a lot of sense from my perspective. And I, I think you are absolutely right that we should make sure that we have enough time to have thorough and thoughtful conversations and get feedback from, from our community about issues that we're discussing. And I think we are moving that direction, and it feels like we're headed in a really positive direction from my perspective.
Councilmember Witter, did you still want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted that to run its course if you weren't done because I'm going in a different direction, but I'm going to answer your question. So I guess I should first make sure that you all, you don't need to respond or anything like that. Okay. So I kind of want to address your original question of how do we get here? And I will tell you from where I sit. But let me first pause and say we've had history in the room already with the proclamation. So I feel it's important to remind ourselves that, that was pretty significant that I asked to speak and give that proclamation, that it wasn't a coincidence. As a black man, that document we were talking about was not thinking about me because at best, my people were property. So I'm laying the context for how does Steve enter this room, right? So when I answer your question, you'll have a better idea where I'm coming from. So keeping in mind that historically speaking, it has never benefited people like me to say, well, that's how we've always done it. I was open to hearing, what's this change? Because several things have changed that we don't seem to acknowledge anymore, that I had to live with, as did you, for about two solid years. And the last year, we've forgotten that rhetoric, which is, things are not the same. We had COVID, things are not the same. I genuinely believe things are not the same. And what it is, is that everything we did during COVID is now being paired with everything we were doing pre-COVID, just do it all post-COVID. And I think that's too much to be asking. We did not have all these cameras. I want to thank Wes because he's helped me get over my own insecurities because the back of my head keeps showing. With all this going on, I still have human concerns about the back of my head going bald. Gotten over it, didn't have to worry about that in the other space, just a tangible difference. I will also remind us, no offense to our current clerk, we have the state of Washington's best city clerk, who mysteriously left the profession to go do something other than clerk. And I have to go, that's kind of interesting. I also want to clarify, and this is all one building upon, so you do have to roll with me. At our last session, when you brought up this session, I was clear, hey, I'm looking at this for the first time, which was a genuine comment because I was. But by the way my brain works, you give me two documents and one's redlined, I'm thinking they're feeding into each other. The issue there was the follow through. I genuinely thought this was a completely different thing, not what you had already gone over with in a group setting with me, one-on-one. And I'm not sure if we ever did it publicly other than that first time, but I did feel like I had enough time once you told me what it was. But my genuine was, oh, wow, somebody followed through with something, to your point. And I could never figure out why are people not following through with this city? Be it the council making the request, a resident making a request, because they let us know all the time how they're waiting on something. That's not following through by my definitions, right? So we've had all of that. But nonetheless, we have a brand new staff, which is just my way sticking to the question of, how do we get to this idea of switching to one day a week instead of two days a week? I think to myself, well, I got a brand new city clerk, he's trying to level set, which is all I thought this document was. Not a single thing I'm taking as binding, just so you know. Unless the state of Washington somehow says it's binding because you came up with it, I'm like, this is guidance at best, not binding. That was also why I could proceed with the conversation. But nonetheless, what I have learned when you have these changes, and again, going back to history, is that when you have that one little subtle, you can finally hear that one little quiet voice that's been speaking up the entire time, but nobody's ever heard, which I presumed happened. So when I look at it, I go, I have absolutely agreed to work Monday and Thursday. And if you haven't noticed, I don't even look at it. I just work on days that end with Y, which I know you all do as well. But this idea of coming to this space, I said Monday or Thursday. So if you want to change it to one day a week, I go, if that's how you want to spend your money, I'm not going to do any less work. If anything, you're going to give me more time to get deeper into it because I do agree with Councilmember Sonmore. It does feel rushed sometimes when you hand a Thursday project and say, let's vote on Monday. But I haven't sensed that from this group yet, which again, I hope is what you're trying to level set here, to avoid those. Now, it sounds like I'm denigrating the previous administration, and I hope their listing that is not at all what I'm doing. You did the best you could under the circumstances, but those circumstances changed our world. And now this set of people are trying to figure out what to do in this world. So if out of that has come this idea that I won't force you to get something published by Friday when we went to 10 o'clock Thursday and you got to get a full day that you already had Friday, and now figure out how to get it publicized and whatever you're doing behind the scenes that I genuinely don't want to have to worry about, I go, giving you an extra couple of days is going to work. I promise you it's only going to help me, just from the amount of time with it. But I also think it shouldn't mean that because we gave you that extra week that that counts as it came to you more than one time. No, no, no. If it takes that much longer, so be it, right? If you don't have the three day, now it's three weeks because we're only meeting every other week, I would expect us to still do that, which we have had unfortunately a handful of times, what felt like, we got to make this decision right now. But I, again, think that was the transition between the previous administration, COVID, and new administration, learning what didn't, did get done and everything that goes along with that. If that were to continue, I would say we would revisit that, to your point that we should be running the show, not the staff. But at this point, I'm willing to listen to staff, and they seem to be saying collectively, this is in our direction that's best interested for everybody. And that was the weirdest sentence ever, so I want to diagram that when I get home. There we go.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Well, I want to follow up by, what a great dialogue. Because everybody, and I, I kind of know Rick when he's looking down, he's studying something or is going to say something. So I think it was great dialogue. And our mayor, if you want to join in. But the thing that I heard the most is having time to understand something. And if it has to come back to the council once, twice, or three times, that is acceptable. And I think that was the main goal of this conversation, is we all want to keep informed. We all want to do the best we can for our city. There's a lot of changes going on. That's why it's okay to question why we still have to pay for paper bags at the grocery store after COVID. But it's, it's looking at why we're doing certain things. So in our manual, did you know on Thursdays, can we vote on something? Only if it's listed on an agenda item. So that means how we used to do it, sometimes we would bring stuff up at the last minute and somebody would have us vote on something. It would always drive me crazy. But you mentioned this as guidance. It is still codified, right? It is still a document. It's still tied to some of our stuff. And so what we're doing is we're also changing some of the things that we're doing by putting it in here. I know it's a boilerplate and some things have changed and some are doing it different. But like on work sessions, we won't be able to vote on a topic unless it's on the agenda or it's been notified. And there's just little things like that, that, you know, it would have been helpful to go section by section, so we would have been all on the same page and we all know what's in this document. And I think sometimes, I still don't understand exactly how many times we can call in from a teleconference. It said like on emergent or urgent, you know, if there's a flood or something like that, there's guidance on that. But, you know, you really shouldn't call in telecomm, or on WebEx as often. It's kind of as maybe a needed thing and not something that you should abuse. But there's little things in there. I don't know if we're, if we need to tone up, but just be aware of what's in the manual is what I'm seeing.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, I, I have some questions. And the first one would be a request from the city manager. I know you told us why Thursdays would be best, and I think you said it very well. And so regarding the staff and prepare time, I was wondering if you could say that again for us?
Sure. And it wasn't, Thursday wasn't pre-selected. It was looking at all the other boards and commissions that the city has and that values their input and trying to minimize disruption for them. If, for instance, we were looking at Mondays or Thursdays because those are the nights that council already meets, looking at Mondays, we would need to move the planning commission days because on your off Monday is when the planning commission meets. If we move to another day of the week, we would be adding to our, our, our bill for our audiovisual support, make sure these meetings are broadcast and transparent to the public. But more than anything else, regardless of what day of the week it is chosen, it's important for us to be able to take your feedback at a work session, incorporate that feedback appropriately into the final document that you will see and potentially vote on the next week. But the conversation is absolutely correct. It doesn't necessarily have to come back to the next meeting. We can, council can put this on a work session agenda for as many times as necessary in order to get it completed. However, typically, most items do come back to you at the very next meeting. And whatever feedback you have, we want to be able to incorporate that into the final document that you'll see. But we also want to get it posted on, for, for the public to review so that they have time to, the public has time to consider what the final document would be and provide you comment before you make your final decision is really the most important part.
You have more?
Great, thank you. And then to Councilmember Sonmore's question, I, I know that this document is, states that we can adjust it or change it at any time we want. But one of the concerns Councilmember Sonmore mentioned was the Zoom meetings, I think, or being excused. And I know we talked about it when it was after COVID and we didn't put any restrictions on it. So I don't know if you want later on a discussion on Zoom meetings and/or restrictions for those? That was one thing. And the second one was, said something about city manager dollar amounts?
Or the contracts, he can sign like a $40,000, but $40,000 isn't in there? And what?
Oh.
What is the process for going above and beyond?
So if I can answer that, the, the staff's purchasing limits are not in this manual. They're actually in the purchasing policy, which we have currently adopted, but we're also reworking to make it a little bit simpler. And that's really a large part of my philosophy on these things, not just the protocol manual, not just the purchasing policy, but keep it as simple as possible so everyone can understand it. But more importantly, from my point of view, is the simpler it is, the less opportunity there is to make mistakes. And we try to avoid those mistakes whenever we can. They will happen on occasion. But if we can simplify that ahead of time and reduce those mistakes, I think that's a benefit to everybody.
Go ahead.
And then if I change from that to, you're talking about all council members should receive the same information. So I don't know if that's supposed to be in this document or it's in a different document. And I don't know if that's in our, we used to have council etiquette kind of protocol, like no surprises. I don't know, that kind of thing. Is that in here? Is that separate? Or is it gone? Or, but anyway, the question is about the shared information per council member.
So one of the most important things I do, I think, as a city manager and all of our staff do, is making sure that all of you have the exact same information. That's very important to me, that I don't share information with some of you or a segment of council and not with others. I will never do that if I can avoid it. And if it does happen, I expect to be called out on it because I should be, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, a couple, a couple of thoughts. I think, you know, on the, the topic of, of remote attendance through Zoom or, you know, however that, that's arranged, I think it's, it's important that we keep that on the books. And, and, you know, if we want to send, set some parameters about explaining why we're, we're remote, I think that'd be fine. But given that we're, we're still in a, in a situation where we're seeing an uptick in, in COVID this, this month, and, you know, I think the standard for, for us and for public accessibility is to have remote access, whether it's here at the state legislature or I think most, all other cities are sort of functioning this way. I would encourage us not to limit our, our remote access for both, you know, health and safety and, and access considerations. And then in terms of sort of the information equity, I just want to express some, some appreciation to staff because I, I like getting, you know, the, the calendar items through, through the email and really appreciate Jeff, your, you, you're including counsel on, on more staff communications and as well as your weekly updates. I, I find those really illuminating and feel a lot more connected to, to the city administration. So, you know, I think, the, the other thing that I've noticed, us, us discussing our sort of questions that we might have about the document, that our, you know, policies, whether it's city or state policies code that the, the document references. And I, at least I, I find that this super helpful. I think before I was ever a part of city government, I had tons of questions about sort of, sort of the ad hoc way that, that things went on, you know, at, at the city. And I know that, that plenty of other folks do. So I think it's, this, this is a really valuable dialogue because it's, this is a document that, that I think our city needs and that the, the public will benefit from and, and I think expects us to have. So I'll stop there.
Okay. Councilmember Sonmore?
I'll finish up. I, I, I'm, I'm very happy to hear that communication style is fitting your needs, but it's not fitting mine. And one thing, that's what I was talking about, inclusion last time. We all don't learn the same, just like we aren't all the same. It would be a very boring world if we were all the same. I don't learn by just seeing an email. An email is a way to share stuff. Communication is verbally talking back and forth, having meetings. Otherwise, we'd be doing this all online through an email. But to me, it's, I've been doing it almost 24 years and I was used to a certain way. And now all of a sudden you changed it. And I know things are different now, but, so the things that we've been doing all along have changed. And to me, it's, it's, it's not helpful. And I'd like to see and have us talk about it different ways. And that's why I was asking to put some of that communication. And I know you're all giving me this dirty look and this grin, and I can feel it all the time, but I'm different. I, I, you can't expect for us to be always treated the same way and expect different results. One of the things I know that has been talked about a lot is you can do all this great work for the city, but if you're not bringing your council along, you're not going to remember all the great work. You're just going to be remembered that you were left out. And I'm trying to make everybody not left out because I feel like the one who's left out on council, and it doesn't feel good. You were just talking about how different things evolve for you over time. But for me, as a woman at this age, certain things don't relate like it would for a younger person through an email. And I have trouble with my eye. And I have trouble with my eyes, so I don't like staring at the screens all the time. So I'm just giving it to you upfront, so there's no surprises in telling you how I feel about it. Because every time I talk about communication, and I've talked about this for months, I get eyes rolled at me or you're different, or you don't learn the same. Why aren't you catching up like this? And I'm telling you, I'm not the same. I am different. And I'm not going to apologize anymore for it. But it's something that inclusion, to me, makes us all want to feel wanted and needed at the council. So if I bring up stuff you guys don't like, I'm bringing it up from a different point of view. I'm coming from a different age category. I'm coming as a woman. I'm coming from living here most of my life, being on the council a long time. And I, I do think I deserve that respect to at least be heard and at least have some dialogue about it. And that's what I appreciate tonight, that we had dialogue about this. Now I understand how you feel about it. Erin, I understand about the kids' scheduling. I was thinking it was opposite because my daughter would have stuff either on this night or this night. But if every night was booked on Thursday, I wouldn't be able to go to her ballet recital because it was always on a Thursday or something. So I was trying to think of you on that. But I wanted the dialogue to understand why we were changing that. And it didn't feel like that dialogue was there. So that's why I bring this stuff up. And I just wanted to correct myself. On 801, it talks about meeting schedules. And it said, "No final action shall be taken at any work session unless the matter has been noted for an action item on the agenda." So I just wanted to, it didn't say vote.
I have a few notes. For, for me, I wasn't at first very happy about changing it to the same night every week because I had the freedom of going to a Monday, Monday event or a Thursday event when I don't have a council meeting. And having it on one night a week would mean that, you know, there are things I'm going to miss. I'm going to miss it anyways. I was hoping to be, I was hoping that we would pick a Monday because that, that personally was the best day of the week for me. It wasn't for everybody and I wasn't for the city. So I'm fine with going on Thursday because that is the best day for everybody. It's not all about me. It's about learning. It's not all about me. And the, we're going to, if I remember correctly, the meetings are, are titled differently. One is a work session and one is a main meeting, council meeting.
Regular business meeting, yeah.
Regular business.
Or regular meeting.
So that people will know what type of meeting is going to be on that night. And I, I would like to have the remote meetings continue because that way, I, I remember we're, we were in Spokane. And we, I couldn't miss a, a meeting because my city manager told me I had to show up to the, to the council meeting via remote Zoom. And so no excuses anymore. If you're traveling for business, even for city, you're going to be showing up if you can.
Yeah.
Also, if you're ill, I just don't want you here, period. The, there, oh, I guess I didn't write it down, so it's, oh, the information. I'm finding that, that I am getting the information. And I get it one more time on my one-on-one with the city manager. So I get the city manager report on, on Fridays and then I, and I have my one-on-one with him, and I haven't missed one yet. And so I, I feel like I am understanding and, and feeling good about voting when we do vote. So I, I, I don't see a problem with that. Not everything in the manual, not everything that we're doing, not all the changes are, are things that, that I 100% love, but I know it needs to happen. So that's the end of my two cents here. Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Not to push us up to the three-hour limit here. No, I got laughter over there. Great. Just trying to check people's attitudes right now. One, I want to back up and just acknowledge council member Sonmore. Thank you for sharing. And I would say, personally speaking, it was really interesting to hear you say that because I've had those exact same thoughts personally about myself. So it's interesting to, I think I'm looking at somebody who I feel like this is your council and you're saying you don't feel like you're always included. I think that's a good, everybody should go home and think about that message. That said, I also realize I should have, and will now, share with you all my genuine reaction to the manual when we were in the private meeting that I would have, if I realized that's what I was looking at, shared last time. We were talking about, I'm sharing now, which was I got this manual, I read it, and I came in front of my city manager and I said, "This is absolutely excellent information I needed three years ago when I joined the council." Which is just my way of saying, I have always seen this document as our future onboarding mechanism. Because, and this is, take it however you need to, former administration, I represent the break in the continuity. I've realized that now. And it comes down to, I vividly remember this, the city clerk looking at the city manager going, "That's my job," and me not knowing what they're talking about. Well, they would eventually tell me, "Well, the city manager, this is the first time he's ever on-boarded anybody." That being me as a council member. Wasn't any real explanation why it shifted to him and from her, but everybody else had been on-boarded by her, is my understanding. I don't know what happened to the rest of you. But I do know that coming in, that was when a change, quote unquote, had happened. So when I hear about this idea of a new city manager coming in, his first step is to, "Let's see what you all have been doing." I am going to tell you all once again, very publicly, I was on this council at least two times before I knew what the hell the consent calendar was because nobody told me what the consent calendar was. They left it up to you, Steve, with a PhD to figure it out. So PhD somehow just means you know everything? It does, for the record. Kidding. Checking the temperature room. But nonetheless, we take a lot for granted. And I do want to kind of point that out that it's interesting, you said 24 years you've been doing this. I don't think this manual is for you. I think this manual is maybe for Rory, definitely kind of Erin and I, but everyone else. You've been doing it long enough that it's not for you. It's helping you recognize what have we been doing, what have we been doing? Because it's all new to us, which you do a wonderful job. And I thank you every time when you say, "This is new to these several of our council members." But we talk about it. I am not kidding. I do not know what RS 7200 was. I don't even remember the number at this point because it's just a piece of paper that I know I'm supposed to memorize to get in. That's why I said, "Let me be a part of the damn advisory group." I didn't sign up for meetings because I love them. I'm like, I'm trying to educate myself because I know I'm on my own. And I'm learning I'm not on my own with this staff. And I'm sorry we have not acknowledged our new deputy clerk, excuse me, deputy city manager, who is clearly making a difference, even if I can't get the damn title right. But nonetheless, the point of that is we've got new dynamics. You can sense there's something new. But there's still so much that I'm learning after we've experienced it. And I don't think that's good either. Thankfully, nothing's been detrimental. You can learn about it and come in ready the next time. But I really look forward to whoever joins this council in the future just being handed a manual, read that, and then come with your questions. Not figure out what your question should be even when you work in the field. I mean, that's amazing to me to think that you didn't know anything, however you phrase that. I'm like, you were in government and you still admit you had stuff to learn, if I heard you correctly. So just putting that out there to say thank you for the manual. I agree with everything I have heard up here. I appreciate the dialogue as well. And I stand by it's not binding, even though I know there's stuff in there that's binding.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief, but wanted to express my appreciation to council member Woodard because it, you know, when we did have our onboarding or our, our sort of new council member conversation with this document as, as a helpful guide, I think, you know, having this conversation, or, you know, it felt like it was, it was instructive. Some of it was new, some of it was just sort of helpful, helpful information that, you know, you could see anyone sort of being, being assisted by in this work, whether it's reference guide or a place to, to share or to direct folks to if they, if they do have questions. And I think that, you know, whatever, you know, the document is that, that the final sort of agreement is to or, or whatever, I think it, it is just a document. And it is, it is also a guide for us to be able to, you know, have, have these exact conversations. So I think in, in that room, as a guide for, you know, councilman Woodard, councilmember Murray and I, it was, it was a super helpful tool. And I think, you know, it's, you know, on its own, you know, it, you may or not, may or may not find value. But I think it's, you know, when you, when you're using it as, as a tool, as I think we, we hope to, you know, it is, is a, it's an opportunity to sort of educate the public. It's, it's building, I think, you know, good, good practice here in terms of transparency and sort of, you know, a, a place where you, you can direct folks to, to reference, you know, whether it's a salary commission or, you know, standards for, for us up here or, you know, how, how we do any number of other things. So I, you know, I'm enjoying this conversation. And I also wanted to, you know, share or apologize to councilman Sonmore. I hope my, my previous comments weren't taken as, as directed at, at you. I was just speaking generally. So I did not mean to, to aim those to you or, or anyone else in the room. So, thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Can you explain to me about being a guide? Because we took this out of 2.10O. So how is it a guide if we took the agenda out, the order of business, the reading of the minutes, the speaking of the council? How is it still considered a guide? Isn't it still codified? Isn't it something that we have to follow? I understand if you don't call in by five, that could be waived a little bit because you wait till the last minute if you're sick and you, you want a telephone conference. I know I just did that. But how is it just a guide?
So a lot of the things in here guide council, how council works together, works with staff. The first part, and I'll take the remote attendance piece. That is section 7.08, and it's on, starts on page 24. Really, the point that I'm getting to here is 25. It doesn't require or limit the number of particip, number of times you can participate remotely. It simply encourages people to attend in person. So there is no limit there.
But it says not preferred method or something like that? No, it doesn't?
Correct.
I, I wouldn't expect it to say five. We actually have had that in the past. We got one call in per year. And I always hated that because what if you had some horrible disease? And you, I know Kyoko was sick for, you had something, or when somebody went, goes out for surgery or something. And this is, I, I'm not sure if I'm quoting the same. But if somebody had something, I hated it because it said one time, you know? And so I understand it doesn't say this, but do you excuse somebody because they want to go shopping at Nordstrom's at their annual sale every Thursday? You know, do we excuse for that? So that's, that's why I brought it up because, and these things sometimes go away. What I'm realizing, every time you get a new council on, your rules change according to the people who sit on the council. Like councilman Ryan was bringing up, our biggest thing years ago was no surprises. We'd have people at our end of the meeting and pop on all these different agenda items and things, and we couldn't answer. And we'd have an audience full of people. And we're like, you know, we haven't been prepared for that. We don't know how to answer that. And so that was a big thing. And I'm glad you brought that up for protocol issues. But sometimes it just says it's, you know, maybe not the preferred method. And I know you said we had something in here for staff, treating them with respect or whatever, because you might think of that as your own personal, you know, person to get stuff done. I don't want to use the word secretary because I know that's dated. But, but I just didn't want somebody coming on council thinking that you could have all your meetings virtually done. And I don't think we have that issue here now. But, you know, just when we go to excuse somebody, we used to say what it was excused for because we had people that, you know, had some issues or some scheduling issues with different things. And so I'm just trying to manage expectations. I'm not trying to limit everything. But, you know, if we don't talk it as a council in a whole, as a whole, how are you going to know how many times that you, because I felt really guilty listening in while I was sick. And I was like, should I use this time? Or should I just go to bed? Should I listen in and try and participate the, the best I can? But it's just managing our expectations of people calling in over phone. You know, right now, we're working with that at work. We're finding a lot of issues both ways. You know, people love working from home and having that freedom, which is wonderful. And then we have management saying, "Well, you're not meeting, meeting people enough. You're not onboarding enough. You're not sharing the education enough." So I'm just trying to manage those expectations and what is expected. Because, you know, Brian's not here tonight. I wasn't calling him out at all. You know, he's doing what he's doing. But it's, you know, if we had somebody that was calling in constantly, we'd want to manage that expectation.
Okay. Are we still going to vote tonight? Need to get out of here.
Ask a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, are there additional? I mean, it feels like we've had a lot of good conversation. Are there unresolved things that we feel like we haven't addressed in order to move forward? I don't feel like I personally do. And I also have been the person up here who's like, "I don't feel like I'm ready to vote on this." And I have appreciated when council has granted me time to, to continue to reflect and, and review things that we have under consideration before us. So I guess, but I don't, I know we're not supposed to really talk to each other. But councilmember Sonmore, like, does that, I mean, do you have thoughts on, on where we are at this point?
My overall thoughts are, and, and this is, it's not, it's getting agenda items on once or twice so we have more information and we can make better decisions. And it's, if you all decide Thursdays are fine, I'll go with majority, no problem. I don't have a problem with the manual. It was just the manual housed the date within it. And I felt it should have been a separate agenda item. So when you go to look at the agenda, whoever wants to know in our public would understand that we voted to change the date. We just didn't vote on a manual. And the manual automatically changed the date of our meeting time. It was separate. And we took the due diligence to vote on changing the time and dates of that. The last time anything had ever been changed on a council meeting was about 22 years ago. And we used to meet at 7:30 and it went to seven. So to me, this is a huge change. You know, it's not a little change. And the manual, I really wanted us to be a part of it. So we owned it. So we take in charge of what our leadership is supposed to be about. And those were my pet peeves. And I think we did some of that tonight. So, you know, if you want to put a motion on the table, we can vote on that.
Well, I see we have our attorney, Hillary, with her hand raised. Go ahead.
It's like councilmember Sonmore knew I was going to speak today after many months of not saying a word. I would suggest that this was not, that, that there is no vote on this tonight. And the reason is you've been provided a draft ordinance in your pocket. It's ordinance XXX and it amends chapter 2.7 of the municipal code, but doesn't say what it's striking and repealing. And unless you have a different ordinance in front of you tonight, I wouldn't recommend you adopt anything. I think that needs a little revision before it's ready. And I would hate for you to adopt your protocol manual now and not be able to repeal conflicting, potentially sections of the municipal code. I think those things need to be done hand in hand. So I don't know if I'm buying you time and I don't know if your city manager's rolling his eyes at me, but I wouldn't recommend you do it until that ordinance is ready and pristine and that you do those two things in tandem.
All right. Does that answer everyone's question? All right. Thank you, Hillary. Okay, so we're not voting tonight.
Can we give direction, though?
Yes.
So I would follow the direction of our city attorney that we do it hand in- So I would follow the direction of our city attorney that we do it hand in hand. And then when we do vote on the meeting date change, that that be a separate agenda item.
Is that a motion? No. That would be a recommended change?
So what I would say is, given the discussion tonight, we can put this on a future consent agenda. That would be, I believe, your next regular meeting is October 2nd. So we would put that on your, your future consent agenda and see if we can do that. Or if council desires, we can certainly bring this back for another work session.
Councilmember Sonmore?
I would prefer not the consent agenda. We should, in the past, for our, the consent agendas were made kind of privately. Merely for items that we had no questions on. They were for the very basic things. But everything else came back as an agenda item. So you could actually, if somebody read through it and said, oh, I forgot, it gives us another chance to look at it. It doesn't hurt anything. It's just maybe a few minutes of our time, but it's not consent.
So you can, you want this brought back as a regular item that we can vote on at that time? That is not on the consent? Does everyone agree with that? Okay. All right. Looks like everyone agrees to that. So, and that will be at a, not a work session, but a regular meeting?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. For fear that we wrap this up and then I realize, oh, that was, I should have asked that question in that section. It's come up a couple of times. And let me just preface it by saying, my understanding for the last five years is that we can take action on any day, that they're all quote unquote, "regular" meetings. We've just come up with this nuanced terminology of study session and regular meeting. So just kind of want to address that because I didn't quite want to miss your point that if we had a quote unquote, "study" session, and we just did what we did, we wouldn't have been able to vote, if I followed your argumentation, if I was following it correctly. So feel free to correct me if I'm any time wrong. So I just want to get that cleared up as well. Like, I thought we could take action at any meeting. So I don't want to lose that.
You can, as long as the item is noted on the agenda so the public has an opportunity to weigh in, unless it's an emergency.
Yeah.
And that declared emergency has different notice requirements.
Okay. So moving to the same Monday, or to Thursday, or Saturdays, wouldn't have any impact. We'd have the same threshold to, you could talk, you could take action because that's the date you've chosen as your regular meeting.
Think Hillary's back here?
Yes.
Yeah. I would also add, I would agree with what he said, and I would also add to it. It's because your clerk over notices your workshops. She notices them as though action could take place. So it's not in every city where that's true, but it is true because your city clerk notices them so well. If they're on, if something's on the agenda, they're fair game.
All right, go ahead.
And Hillary, I just want to bring that up. Years ago, we used to not vote on any work session just because it didn't give the public enough time. Because you didn't know, well, you're voting today? Or I thought you just voted at council meetings. Why are you voting at a work session? And I remember that was really hard. That's why I was kind of shaking my head yes or no, because things come to us at the last minute. And I understand that if a contract or something. But, I mean, I would prefer not to vote a lot at work sessions because it doesn't give our public, our public, that sounds horrible, our neighbors enough time to understand that we're voting. And so Hillary, what you're saying is because we advertise it, then we can. But I would just caution us not to do it, overdo it, because I don't think that's really fair to everybody because that's what a council meeting is for.
Okay. So that'll come back to us at a later, later date, and we can wrap it up for tonight. Thank you. So next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I have a bunch of stuff, but I'll keep it short because we're almost to our limit. Couple of things. We interviewed our DEIC consultants today, Deputy City Manager Carolyn did, along with a couple, a couple members of our team. We had nine firms submit for the strategic plan and nine for the training element. Some were the same firm for both elements, but not all. We narrowed that list down to finalists and interviewed three firms today for the training element and four for the strategic plans. So we hope to have a decision and have a consultant on board within the week. So that's a good thing moving forward. Website redesign is going to kick off in October. So we'll get a shiny new website. And then, let's see, the utility billing kit is moving along, the welcome kit that we intend to send out to all of the new residents. And the LTAC process, I did want to mention, is going to get started in the next couple of weeks. That's going to be important for people that will bring visitors to our community. And the art show starts this weekend on Saturday over at the library. And I think we're all looking forward to that. That's going to be a lot of fun. And I want to remind people that to sign up for the comprehensive plan update notifications. You can sign up for those and be automatically updated every time a new, new item occurs, and an opportunity to participate and provide comment on the comprehensive plan. That's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jeff. Just a quick question there. So with the signing up for the comprehensive plan updates, are we utilizing folks that are already signed up through our channels already to share that they're, they have the opportunity to sign up for that separate notification process?
Yeah. We ask everybody to tell all their friends and neighbors and family to sign up and participate if you can, even if it's only on one little component of the comprehensive plan. All of that is important participation that we need to hear as we develop the language.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. So my question, oh, go ahead. I had on the welcome kit. Are we sending that via snail mail or email?
So primarily email, because that's how most new customers sign up. But we will have a limited number of paper copies for folks that don't want to receive that through email. So we have a way to get that to them as well.
How do we get their email?
When they sign up for a utility account, if they do automatic billing.
Okay. Because I was wondering. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
I just want to ensure the con plan committee meets on the 27th and council is not invited to that one. We're invited to the October 3rd or 4th?
Fourth.
Okay.
27th is just the first meeting of the comprehensive plan advisory group. Just kind of a get to know you in what direction and what you'll be doing for the next 15 months or so. And then the one on the 4th is the general overview with planning commission, city council, and the advisory group all together, with dinner served and entertainment.
Thank you.
Entertainment?
All right. So that, no one else has any, anything else to add for the city manager? Okay. So next is the city, the council liaison reports. And I'll just start. Why don't I just start over there with Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this as quick as possible. In the beginning, no. On the 7th, I had my one-on-one with, man, nobody, thank you, I almost laughed there. One-on-one with the city manager. I always really appreciate those. The 8th, I had the opportunity to participate in the Affordable Housing Candidate Forum up in Everett. That was really interesting. On the 9th, I had an opportunity to come and serve at the Day of Service. I did a Day of Service at my home. But thank you for all of our residents who took time out of their day to come and make this city a that much even better place to live. On the 11th, I had the honor of going down to Edmunds for their 9/11 tribute. And I will just say this, having lived in this city this long, I did not know we have a piece of the original tower, one of the towers in the city of Edmunds next to the fire station, a really beautiful art display, really. I mean, it's a point of reflection, art, it's just, everything about it is unbelievable. And it's right across the street from their redesigned space over there, the park. So you can get a twofer, if you will. On the 12th, I was at, in Linwood for our, two of our councils, two of our county council members, Councilmember Mead and Nearing, who represent different political backgrounds, have been doing what's called the Building Bridges Tour. It was a community conversation, community gathering. I thought it was unbelievable. It was amazing. And that said, if we were interested in hosting something like that down here in Mount Lake Terrace, they were open to that idea. So I just kind of put that out, not as new business, but if that is, piques anyone's interest. It was absolutely worth attending. You had Republicans, you had Democrats, you had Libertarians, you had non-affiliated, you had everybody you could think of, for the most part, in that room, trying to have a discussion. On the 13th, I had the opportunity to participate online with our revamped Coffee with the City, now I believe called City Talk? Terrace Talk. All right. I knew that didn't sound right. Terrace Talk, which I thought went very well for a guy online who was voiceless because I couldn't hear us. But it was great listening. And then on the 14th, I was with our study session. And then just on the 16th, so I guess that was Saturday, Verdant Health Commission put together a, this is Suicide Prevention Month, and they put together a very amazing Hope and Resiliency Conference with amazing speakers and panels and resource fair. Not to put anybody on Front Street, but I will just say, I was surprised. I was the only elected official in that room. And even I wondered, how did I find out about this and would I have known about it if I wasn't with the VOA? So that's just to say, I'm not sure what broke down there. But we missed a wonderful opportunity as an elected body, collectively speaking, not just Mount Lake Terrace, that's everybody, to hear about such an important discussion, who, which has probably already touched your own family, quite frankly, if I know my family. So in that regard, it was just like, oh, I'm not sure what happened there. But just so you know, that was a wonderful gathering of community as well. And that will be the end of my report.
Is that it?
Yes, that was the end of my report.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. Reading my Park and Rec notes. So last Tuesday, I had a Park and Rec meeting. We're just starting to talk about the five-year Park and Rec fee and charges updates for 2024 and 2028. That will be coming to the council. So you'll see some cost recovery methods in there. And this is something that we do, of course, every five years. And we look at keeping up with the cost, even though we're at approximately 82 cost recovery for the pavilion. We do look at trying to meet the needs and keeping up cost. And one of the things I always like to point out is when it comes to swimming and services for our seniors and our children, our Park and Rec is worth its gold. And being at 82 cost recovery that we've kind of gone up and down over the years on, but it's a well-needed service. And I think people benefit from our Park and Rec. And so we talked about lighting, of course, on the fields and the Ballenger Park viewing platform. And a survey will be coming to the council. And I think they received like 112 responses on that. And then they have a work plan for 2023 for adopting a park, oh, I'm sorry, a company may be looking at adopting up on a park, but we haven't been told what company. And Ken is still looking into that. And then we're doing a tree board update for removal of trees. There was somebody, a tree company cut down a tree they shouldn't have had. So they're looking at replanning three trees in Forest Ridge Park. And then we talked about the field work on Evergreen. And I believe the city's about to start planting 75 trees, if you guys signed up for it, in your yards. They're going to be coming out and marking up your yard so they don't plant over a sewer or water line. And one of the things came up that I thought was interesting that I just wanted to bring to the council now so we have time to think about, the ARPA funds that we set aside for scholarships. If I understood it right, this year's has almost already been used up. And the board wanted the council to talk about possibly having more scholarships. So if they do, I'd like to come back and, and make sure Ken under, has the information on, is that public gifting funds? Can we set up a permanent scholarship? Is it feasible to do something like that? And are we, of course, gifting public funds? But I just want to make sure because I thought the person who asked, I want to make sure we have some information for him or her to understand. And then Left One, at our last budget meeting, we talked about how next year, fire would be taken off the Left One Board. But the way I understand it, it should have been coming off in August or September of this year. So maybe we can update that and just make sure that's correct. And then I attended the cleanup, and that was wonderful seeing everybody. It was nice. I got to work up front and we cleaned up Mayor Smith's area up there. And I left early for that to attend Glenn Benard's, who worked in Public Works for, since about 1990. He became full-time in 1992. And there were a lot of people from, well, you know, quite a bit of his coworkers there. And it was a lovely tribute to him. And they couldn't say enough about how much he loved the city of Mount Lake Terrace and the people in it, even though he didn't, he lived right outside, but he grew up here for most of his life and married his wife, who was at the same high school that he was from. But there was so much talk about the love and support that Glenn had for the city of Mount Lake Terrace. Even after he retired, he would go to Public Works to make sure that they knew where every water, water meter was. And so I just wanted to share that along and honor his memory. And then just talking about Terrace Talks, maybe sometimes we can talk someday about why we try not to cut down our full name and use Mount Lake Terrace as our full name. There's a lot of other names that people use that we try and stay away from that you might not have heard of before. So one of the things we did about 10 years ago is really be proud of our name of Mount Lake Terrace because it is a beautiful name and include that. And so one of the things we did in our minutes and our notes was never call it just Terrace or call it that. It's Mount Lake Terrace, and we're not Malt Lake Terrace. We actually called the news one time because they were calling us Malt Lake Terrace. But it's something to be proud of. But Terrace Talk, I think for that is just fine. I also wanted to find out what was going on in the senior center. I looked at some of their activities and was surprised there weren't more. And so maybe we'll get an update on that. And just to answer your comment about Verdant, I went to an open house they had that I just happened to see, and it was great. They had people giving away blood pressure kits and all this kind of stuff that I needed for my home. And I saw what you were talking about after the fact. And I was so disappointed, I couldn't go to that because they put on pretty cool events. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, started off this period on the 8th of September at the Seashore/Peeta Sound Regional Council meeting, learned, had some good presentations there. Was sad not to have been able to attend in person, but that meeting's as informative as ever. On the 9th of September, I attended the Day of Service here at Veterans Park and the Civic Campus and got a goofy quote in the newspaper for it. But it was, it was good fun to do that. I think I saw all of, all of you all there. And this isn't an official council event, but on September 11th, I was at Diamond Knot for a fundraiser for the class of 2024. Apparently, my 20-year anniversary coming up here, not anniversary, graduation. Not sure how that happened. But so that was a fundraiser for their ASB, I believe. And just want, bring this up for just, you know, for our awareness and public awareness of the fact that, you know, a lot of the pandemic impacted high school classes, kind of behind the eight ball in terms of fundraising. So just keep that in mind in coming years. And had, had a good time there and got to meet some, some folks I hadn't met before. So moving along, attended the Terrace Talk event on the 13th. On the 15th, I tuned in via Zoom to the Snow Track, or a Snow Track meeting, that is the Snoomish County Transportation Coalition. There's some good reports out from all the transit agencies, as well as contracted sort of mobility services around Snoomish County. But I think what's most helpful perhaps for us and staff in particular, Snoomish County Human Services Department, I believe. I believe, it is that I had a report about the cold weather shelters, had a nice proactive report about cold weather shelters for this coming winter, I believe from November through March. They maintain a webpage that is updated daily, that has current information about open, you know, warming shelters, as well as just general sort of shelter for our unhoused brothers and sisters. And hopefully, you know, that's a helpful resource for us and our neighbors. Also, on the 15th, I attended the Edmonds Bicycle Advocacy Group tour that I think we all got emails about. But that was a really interesting tour. It was with council members and mayors of our neighboring cities in Edmonds and Shoreline, met down in Shoreline. And this was focused on the Inurban Trail and sort of the gap that exists at the county line with State Route 104. There's some interest amongst bicycle and pedestrian advocates, as well as myself and others, at building better connectivity across the county line on that trail right of way and potentially, you know, funding of, probably through a state budget ask, a study that would then set the stage for a future connection, a potentially a bridge that would cross over local 104. That is not in our jurisdiction, but we have a nearby part of that path. And I know that we'll, you know, I for one, and many of our neighbors use that trail. And it's a real, it's a real gap in the sort of multimodal trail network that, you know, as we get more dense and as we get light rail and other transit realignment, having way for pedestrians, bicyclists to move through the region is a real, would be a real game changer to have a much safer way to cross that highway. So I believe that is it for me, other than last week's work session. So for that, that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. On September 9th, I showed up for the cleanup here and talked with people that worked hard at lunchtime. And then on Tuesday, the 12th, with Councilmember Sonmore, we attended the Left One Retirement Board. Then the 14th was our study work session. And again, set your calendars, this Friday, the 22nd, will be the Arts of the Terrace. It'll be the preview show. And that's for artists and their family, council members, and all of our staff here. And that's going to be in this chambers at 6:30 to 7:00 will be the awards. So we'll do the first, second, third place, three different categories. And then we'll go to the library and do the preview of all the artwork there from 7:00 to 9:00. And we'll have some music there. And like I said before, some libations. And so if you can attend, that'd be great. And then the show will be starting officially Saturday and go to the next Saturday. So 23rd to the 30th will be the show. And that will follow, mostly follow the library hours. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask Councilmember Ryan a quick question? Do they still need volunteers for the, for the duration of the show, or are you guys covered?
No, they still are taking like one-hour spots to help out. So when you show up, I think it's going to be Bonnie Mercer. And, or I can help you with it, guide you who is supposed to be, depending on if they're there. Some can't make it that night. But yeah, it'd be great if anybody could do an hour to watch people come in and out and treat it like an art museum. So, you know, you can't get too close to the pictures. When we get the artwork in and hang it up, everybody wears white gloves, have all sorts of neat things. So anyway, yeah, if you want to help out, you can look at, see me and, or during the week, you can come in anytime and pick a time that's open, do a one-hour stint, or maybe two, depends on your time. But thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. I appreciate it very much. I very much enjoyed it last year. It was fun to see the, you know, diversity of community members who came in to take a look at the art show and the joy and just kind of the fascination that lots of them had. We had lots of young folks. When I volunteered, lots of young folks come in. And so it was very neat to see them experience the artwork. Go ahead.
Just something that was very interesting. Every year, we get two, three, four art pieces that come in from around the nation and just got hung up, three today from Pennsylvania. So come on in.
Awesome. All right. My computer died on me, but I think, I think I got it on my phone. So on the 9th, I was able to come for the kickoff of our annual Day of Service and appreciated, again, I would just echo the appreciation of other council members to their community members who show up time and again to invest their time in making our community better. Went to the Terrace Talk on the 13th and loved that. I thought that was a great reimagining and kind of bringing back that opportunity to connect with community post-COVID. And loved that we filled up this table and that we had a bunch of folks online. And just, I thought it was a great kind of introduction to that and look forward to see how that continues to grow and evolve here as we move forward. A couple of upcoming things, we have our monthly Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission meeting on Wednesday at 7 o'clock, right here at City Council. I'm very grateful, kind of in talking about preparation and things that are happening. And we have a great built-out agenda that you can take a look at, if you're interested in the conversations that are going to be had on Wednesday. And there's a lot of good stuff going on there. So appreciate both the folks, the commissioners, as well as the staff who are making that happen. I will just name, since we had the opportunity to recognize National Voter Registration Day, that several of our DEI commissioners partnered with the League of Women Voters over the weekend to help register folks here in our broader local community. That's my reminder that my kids should get ready for bed. But they definitely are taking that work seriously and thinking about how to exercise their civic engagement and get folks involved, which I'm incredibly grateful for. We've got some great new commissioners and love the folks that are on there, as well as the new ones that have joined. Had a nice email from Ruth Griffith, who is the Adult Services Librarian over at our Mount Lake Terrace Library. They are, have invited us to join them on Saturday, October 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00. They are having an opportunity to come and learn a little bit about Day of the Dead and to create a small altar. They're going to provide all of the materials. And this is an event that's targeted towards teens and adults. So, and I'm happy to forward that on so that Jeff can send that out to the council more fully. But appreciated the invitation and excited to see some of the programming that they are putting on there at the library. And then just wanted to give an early heads up because it always sneaks up on me. So the last two years, I participated in the Week Without Driving Challenge. It's going national this year, which is very exciting. So, but wanted to just get dates on calendars in case anybody wants to join me this year. It's October 2nd through the 8th. So I think whether you can do the whole week or pick a day or two that you decide to leave your vehicle, you know, I think I have learned a lot about just, you know, both our local, I mean, everything from sidewalks and crosswalks and buses and, you know, just, I think a lot of the things that are, lots of members of our community navigate every day. And so, you know, I have learned a lot. And I would just encourage folks to think about, you know, even if it's a day participating, because I think it's a good opportunity to just think differently for most, for many of us at least, in how we get around. So, and I think that was it. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So for my report, on the 6th of September, I attended the Snoomish County, South Snoomish County Mayor's meeting, the South County Mayors. And then later on that day, I was here at City Hall with our city manager and our mayor pro temp to meet with our council member, Snoomish County Councilmember Jared Mead, which was a great meeting. And we might get some money. On the 7th, I attended a Community Transit Board meeting. And on the 8th, I attended the Joint Seashore Meeting with Skateboard and East Side Transportation Board. And at the PSRC Building in downtown Seattle. And it was really, really great to see so many people in, in person. But still, there was like 15 people there and three pages of Zoom. And it was not because, and Rory, Councilmember Payne Donovan was not there because he didn't want to be. I think your name just got dropped from the list. Otherwise, I know you would have been there. And I love those meetings. It's, I don't know how transportation got into my blood, but I just love those meetings. On the 9th, I also attended the National Day of Service. And the food that we served the volunteers was from Time Out Burgers, and they donated all that food, which is really, really great. So thank you very much. On the 11th, I had lunch with State Representative Carolyn Eslek of the 39th Legislative District. And it was just a, a follow-up on a few things that we talked about earlier in the year during session. But she is very, very interested in putting together a group of neighborhood centers. And to connect all of them together. So there's a database in the state of Washington that if you go to any place in the state, you can look up where your local neighborhood center is. Because a lot of it is faith-based, church-based, and school-based, and so forth. And so they're not in the system. So having another lunch with her again, and we're going to continue to follow up on all of this. And if anyone wants to join us for this conversation, and you can join us, please do. On the 13th, again, at City Hall, I met with our city manager and our mayor pro temp, with Chris Collier of the Affordable Housing Alliance. And learned a lot more about what he's doing. And this kid is really a numbers person. And so he is so happy to crunch the numbers for the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And he also will be on our Council Comprehensive Plan Group. And we are just, I can't tell you how lucky we are to have him on that. So that's the end of my report. I guess that is it for Council liaison reports. And next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? Well, I have a few. I know we're past our nine o'clock, but we have a few. For those who, I think that every one of us on the council is a member of the Mount Lake Terrace Community Facebook page, and we all do see what's going on there. So I just wanted to just mention to our people out there that we do read what you write. And we do, behind the scenes, try to correct or respond to some of them. But I just wanted to just mention a few things. Candy Cane Park, yes, we are having problems at Candy Cane Park, but our staff is on top of it. And the only reason why things have not gotten fixed is it takes money. And we weren't expecting Candy Cane Park to have the problems that it's having. And it wasn't, it was on our to-do list, but we have to do parks one at a time. And so we are working on it.
Mayor, can I just follow up on that?
Go ahead.
We talked, and the cost is $30,000.
Good. Well, I just want people to know that. It's not that we're ignoring it. Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
I'm going to go in Front Street myself. What are y'all talking about?
So, Mayor, if I might?
Go ahead.
There's been some issues. We've talked to council a couple times about the broken slides in Candy Cane Park. And it's because of their age and their, not plastic, but their, I guess, the harder plastic. One of the problems we're having, one is funding. But the other is that equipment is a little over 20 years old. And finding replacement slides that can fit onto the equipment that we have is actually the bigger challenge. Trying to find those things is not easy. But we are working on it.
Thank you. And apparently, I did know what you were talking about. I just get our parks mixed up.
Terrace Creek Park, sorry. And then, somebody mentioned cold weather shelters. I don't think we have one in Mount Lake Terrace. And I've been asked several times in the past by neighboring people, you know, where can we send yours? Last year, we had to send, there was a bus or a transport system that came and picked people up here in Mount Lake Terrace to take over to Edmonds, North Edmonds. Or it was not nearby. You really did need a bus. Or go to the bus. But we don't have any, anything down in this part of town. So I don't know what building we can use, but sometimes people do have problems, you know, making it over to the cold weather shelters where they're open. The code enforcement, there was a person that, in Mount Lake Terrace, that apparently got a code enforcement citation. And apparently, she had just lost her husband and her grandson, who was helping her out. And so her, her yard got overgrown and she got a citation. Well, I want to thank the people who decided that, to help them out. And so a person named Daniel Mulder posted the fact that he and some friends have helped out. And now they're almost to the point where everything is, is fixed. And I just want to thank the people out there that are actually stepping up and helping people that need help. And, and so, again, we do read and we do respond, I hope. And our city manager has done a great job. If I send him something that says FYI, it gets done. All right. So anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Not new business, revisit business. And in the spirit of what you just raised, I don't recall if this was while you were on staff or not. But at one point, we had talked about setting up type of routine system in place to be able to acknowledge both folks who are doing that. So you might not have been on staff when we said that. I remember the last time we brought it up, and he's now part of the DEI, Kermit, putting on the, I'm just full of words at 9:15. Let's just leave it at, hey, I thought we were going to have a system in place to acknowledge people and go from there. people, and go from there.
All right, any, anyone else? Okay. If there aren't anything else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. You're adjourned.